You'll get one and a half minutes for opening and closing statements, one minute to respond to the questions. You'll get a 15-second warning to wrap up. If you're still talking at that point, we'll do your stuff. Okay?
That was good.
All right, let's get started. Gordon, if you'd like to begin with your opening statement, please.
Okay, very good. I'm very happy to be here in this afternoon. I am the incumbent on the school board. I've been on the board for a little over a year now. I was appointed to fill an unfilled term, an uncompleted term, which is up on November 3rd of this year with the election. With the appointment, I went directly to work on the board. And as most of you know, I've been very, very involved in the community over the years. And I have had four children that went to these Madera schools. All went to Ravina School and grammar school, and then they ended up going through high school at Madera High School and graduated, and have all left this community after graduating and going to college or into the military. I have been involved in farming. I'm retired from it now. But for over 30 years, I farmed, owned and operated my own farming operation. Also, a second operation that I had owned and started was a pest control application business for 18 years. And also, a agricultural service business was, I was managing and servicing other farm operations for about 17 or 18 years also. As I say, I've been very involved in the community, spent eight years on the Board of Supervisors, and have been making the hard decisions in both there and then on the school board. And especially in this time of the pandemic, we've had a lot of things thrown at us that are unusual. So normally, we have about 20 meetings a year, and I think we've had all 40 this year. So, thank you very much.
Gordon, can you maybe get a little closer to your mic or pull your mic a little bit closer? Thank you. Okay, Israel?
Well, thank you for having me, everybody. My name is Israel Cortez. And, well, my parents, you know, I was born to two parents that came over as immigrants from Mexico. They had virtually no education, and they spoke no English. So I was raised in a poverty-stricken family, low socioeconomic resources. And I was able to, you know, push myself through college. I actually attended Madera Unified Schools first, starting with Riperton Elementary School, went on to Madera High School, and was able to, again, like I said, push my way through Fresno State in 2010. And subsequently, I was able to open my own business, you know, pretty much in the middle of the Great Recession. So, a little bit about myself, I started an insurance business here in town, which is still, you know, 10 years later, is still growing and thriving. I have two children that are currently going through the district right now, the Madera Unified School District. I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader. So I'm firsthand the challenges that our kids are facing and our parents are facing right in certain time and day with the pandemic going on.
Okay, we're going to move into our first question. And Israel, you'll be the first to respond, and I'm going to turn it over to Monica and Emily.
The first question is, what attributes are essential for successful school board members? And how would you describe an effective school board member?
Thank you, Monica. Can you repeat that first part of that question?
What attributes are essential for successful school board members?
I'm going to interrupt for just a minute. Israel, your volume is not very high either, so I don't know if you can... I think when we, these are being recorded, when I upload them, I can probably adjust the volume a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. You want to repeat their question?
Yeah. What attributes are essential for successful school board members? And how would you describe an effective school board member?
Well, an effective school board member, I believe, is able to, first and foremost, set policy for our staff, for administrators, for the district in general. And a good, successful school board member should be able to identify what issues, you know, what choke points we have, what programs are underperforming. Also, we should be able to identify, you know, where to best allocate our resources to be able to give our children the best opportunity to be able to play in a level playing field.
Gordon?
Same question.
Gordon, you're on mute.
All right, there we go. I think that the, to be an effective board member, you have to be involved in the community and know what's going on within the community and with the parents of the school district also. And be involved with the school themselves, the teachers, the principals, and so on, visiting the schools. As far as the second part of that, would you please repeat the second part of it? I didn't remember exactly.
It was, how would you describe an effective school board member?
An effective school board member would be one who is involved, who not just there to listen and not be involved in the discussions, for instance, and really take part in the community and in the district discussions. You do set policy mainly for the board and for the administrators. From the administrators on down, set policy for the teachers and the principals. So what we do is the overall policy setting for the district, and then it's administered by the superintendent.
All right, next question. The first response will come from...
Mira. Mira, experience in local community service and government involvement?
My local community service, I've been involved in a number of things in the community. I've been in Sunrise Rotary for 41 years now, and have been very involved in the community with that. Working with the Interact Club, for instance, youth organization that is in the high school. And then other community activities, as I said, I was in farming for about 30 years. I was president of the Farm Bureau, helped to be involved in setting local policy and working with the state legislature on policy and laws that we could work with from that standpoint. A number of things that I've been involved with in the community.
And Israel?
Well, some of the community experiences and involvement that I've been part of include working alongside Madera County Office of Education, the first five, as a family advocate. And specifically with, you know, the families in our community. Being a family advocate, that required me to go out and identify issues that were going on, you know, at the home level with the families, and connecting these families with resources in the community to be able to help their children and to succeed in the classroom. So I did everything from, you know, identifying, getting referrals to picking services, the food bank, teaching children, the parents, how to interact, how to read, teach their children how to read and write. And I also was involved as an outreach consultant with the Madera Unified School District for about four years. And I currently serve on the planning commission, and that's for about three years.
All right, Gordon? Oh, I'm sorry.
Next question.
Losing track. One of the things I'd like to ask the Madera Youth Leaders, the next question, both candidates, it's regarding how long have you lived in Madera. They both actually acknowledged that in their opening statement. So I'd like to jump to Belva, your first question.
There is a profound urgency to understand the short and long-term implications of COVID-19 pandemic on students, teachers, the schools, and to work together to find solutions that support the success of every student every step of the way. What would be some of your recommendations for strategies for opening schools safely?
Who do you want first on that?
Israel?
Well, I believe that parents should have a choice. So I think, you know, it would be unfair to impose, you know, different people, different parents feel strongly one way or another. And I think it would be unfair to impose your belief or how you feel about opening or not opening the schools to our students. I think there should be a hybrid model, and I believe in choice. And I believe that every parent should have the ability to choose whether or not to send their children to school, maybe a few days per week, maybe not at all, and maybe just having them continue the current status that we have right now, which is teaching our kids from remotely through Zoom.
All right, Gordon, same question.
Right now, we're controlled through the state, of course, in the color scheme that is set up. And since we're in the highest level, the purple level, we have to get into the red level before we can even consider going back into the classrooms. And in order to do that, we have to get our COVID numbers down. We have to be to at least seven cases per 100,000, seven active cases or positive cases within 100,000 population, which translates to about nine, I believe it is, nine or 10. And we're sitting somewhere around that level now. So that's what we have to wait and see when we can actually open school. But we should not do it without safety measures.
Okay, Belva has the next question, and Gordon, you'll be the first to respond.
Lack of in-person instruction has caused, is causing grave concerns referencing mental health issues in the children. What do you have in place to address this? Why aren't we not fighting harder to open safely?
We are harding, going hard to open safely, and we have to ask for waivers for that in order to open once we even get into the red area. But we have set policy for the COVID policy for the whole district that will ensure the safety of all the employees, not just the students, but the teachers, the classified employees in the whole district. And that is a 40-page policy that we have set. We also set a policy for how to return to the district. And there's four different levels of teaching, from the distance teaching, distance learning, clear down to bringing the kids back into the classroom fully.
Israel?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Lack of in-person instruction is causing grave concerns referencing mental health issues in children. What do you have in place to address this? Why are we not fighting harder to open safely?
Well, I believe that it's important for kids to be in the classroom, interacting with their peers. And as it is, we have a, I believe we've had a problem of behavioral health and mental health in our community. But I also agree with Gordon that we have to make sure that we bring our numbers down as far as COVID infections, and we have the right protocols and safety measures to be able to open safely, even in a hybrid model.
All right, thank you. Belva has the next question, and Israel, you'll start with the first response.
What do you see as the biggest obstacle in our community, our community faces in reducing the unemployment rate in Madera? What actions can Madera Unified School District take to support reducing the unemployment rate?
Well, I believe we need to do a better job of selling our community. I believe that one way, one critical thing in selling our community is our schools. I think in any community, a school really sells that community. And by that, you know, we have to make sure that our scores are improving. We have to make sure that we're providing, and it starts with leadership. So we have to, leadership, leadership has to be accountable to our staff, to our teachers, and to our children. If we increase our scores, that's something that's more attractive to people to come into our city or businesses to come into our city and the district is done that way. Another thing, I think, is also being able to make building more attractive to builders in our community. We recently raised fees for builders, and I think that is a good turnoff for them. And so that helps slow down unemployment.
We're going to turn it back over to the Madera Youth Leaders, and Gordon, excuse me. Gordon has an answer.
Tell me to ask.
Let's step back for a minute. I apologize, Gordon, if you'd like to respond to the previous question.
Yes, I would. COVID-19, of course, has been a big deterrent to the job situation in the whole state, and Madera County has suffered also. Traditionally, we are higher in the unemployment rates than the entire state in the San Joaquin Valley. A lot of it is because of the agricultural base. But what we are trying to do at the district level to enhance the ability for students, when they come out of high school, to get a good job, is to create a pathway, a career pathway for them so that they are ready to go into either a good-paying job when they get out of school, when they graduate, or go into university, one or the other. So it's something that is new to our area, but we're looking to implement that within the next year or so.
Now, I'm going to turn the next line of questioning back over to the Madera Youth Leaders, and Gordon, you'll be the first to respond to the next question.
Madera, as many communities face homelessness, what does or can the Madera Unified do to support homeless students?
We have a number of them that are in the district, of course, that are attending schools now. And we have also provided them with the laptops or Chromebooks for the distance learning at the present time, and set up the hotspots in those areas so they can utilize the distance learning. It is a problem. It certainly isn't every community in the state. And what we can do is encourage the other social organizations in the community to step up and help in the housing area, for one thing, and some of the employers to pick them on as employees to give them the incentive to get away from homelessness and back into the mainstream of the community.
Israel?
I believe that we should have a digital master plan for distance learning. I believe we have one in place. I also believe that we need to provide, you know, improve our mental health services for our children. And also, very importantly, I think that we need to, you know, affordable housing is a big issue statewide, and our county is no exception. I believe that we need to work closely with our fellow wheelchairs. They've been very supportive of our district, and I believe that they are a great resource to help us achieve that.
Thank you. Israel, you'll be the next to respond, first to respond to the next question by the Madera Youth Leaders.
How do you feel about $200 million being spent on a new high school, but older schools with great needs have not been updated?
$200, you know, that is, we do have a need for more capacity for more schools. So I believe that's a positive thing, generally speaking. And I believe that, you know, we do need to figure out other ways to raise funds besides, you know, raising our fees for our builders. For example, out of those over $200 million that were spent for new schools, only about 7,000 of those came from builders. So I think that formula needs to be reevaluated. I think it's broken. And I think we need to figure out another way to raise funds to improve our facilities.
Thank you, Gordon?
The building schools, and we've got at least one and possibly two new schools that will be built within the next three to four years. There's a couple of big subdivisions that are being proposed right now that will dictate the new schools. One of the things that we have done is to, in 2018, a bond measure was passed, and we have sold some of those bonds now, and just recently sold $35 million worth. Those bonds will go to help build the new schools, and buy the property for it. Unfortunately, the bond money will only pay for about half of it. The state, we have to petition the state for matching funds to that. And then the, as far as the funds, the builders' funds that are used for extras, for furniture, for supplies, and that sort of thing.
Okay, the next question will be responded first by Gordon.
This is a great need for young people to access employment in Madera. Why don't we have a teen workforce programs for all 15- through 17-year-olds in this community through our schools to enhance their work ethics and getting, and get the training?
We do have some, and we encourage the, like the Future Business Leaders Association and the School, for instance, is very good in leadership training and give them some background in business. We also have a couple of areas that are at the John Wells Center, for instance, that the city operates that is used for social gatherings for students and for learning possibilities there too. So it's not like we have ignored it, but it is something that probably needs to be promoted even more.
Israel?
Yes, can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course. So the question is, there is a great need for young people to access employment in Madera. Why don't we have a teen workforce programs for all 15- through 17-year-olds in this community through our schools to enhance their work ethics and get the training?
Well, I think it comes, it boils down to our leadership, and I believe some of those programs are in place, like Gordon mentioned, but I just don't believe that there is that intra-leadership collaboration, if you will, to be able to really tap into those programs and leverage them and get the most that we can out of them. So I think the opportunity is there, and me being a business owner, I would welcome, you know, you know, a program like that to, you know, get somebody into my office and, you know, give them that work experience, that boost going into adulthood and into the workforce and into the real world, if you will.
Okay, I'll go back to Belva for the next three questions. And the first question will be responded to by Israel first.
We ensure that the sciences are taught when so many experiments cannot be performed in a classroom now and can't necessarily be replicated at home?
I didn't hear the whole thing, sorry. Can you repeat, please?
I'm sure. How can we ensure that the sciences are taught when so many experiments cannot be performed in the classroom now and can't necessarily be replicated at home?
Well, I believe that, I mentioned this earlier, I believe that we need a digital master plan to be able to give our parents the resources that they need. We also need to give our parents the support that they need to be able to make that a reality and be able to make sure that they're getting the education they need in the science area.
Gordon?
That is a problem, and one of the things with the distance learning especially. And you don't have the hands-on, but what is being done is the using theory as much as possible. Hoping that we can open the schools up as soon as possible when it's safe in order to get students back into the classrooms in order to do that. It's not only the science areas, but in the other areas that really need it too. The, for instance, the English learners, it's easier for them to respond and to learn when they see somebody and can watch their lips when they're teaching than they can by doing it on Zoom. So it's a problem, we know.
Okay, next question is coming from Belva.
What role does policy play have in the functioning of the board?
Gordon, you're up.
Say that again, please.
What role does policy play have in the functioning of the board?
Well, the board sets the policy for the whole district, of course, for, and like I said earlier, we set the policy, and then the superintendent and his team administers that policy throughout the district. We try to be very careful to follow the code that we, when we do set policy that is fair to everybody and does follow the education code. We have to do that, of course. So it's something that is very well thought out and before it's ever put on the paper. And then we usually have two readings of that before we ever approve. And that is done after we make recommendations for changes and so on.
So pretty much like Gordon said, the board sets the policy. And, you know, the policy, I believe, should be a long-term strategy, not a short-term strategy. And of course, we have to stay within the bylaws. And when you are setting policy, to make sure that you're respecting the bylaws. But yes, the board sets the policy, and the administrators, and it trickles on to the administrators and to the staff, and so on.
Okay. Next question will also come from Belva. Belva, that's like three questions in one.
It is.
You should read the first two and then go back to the third one. It's all in one paragraph. You should read the first two and then go back to the third one. It's all in one paragraph. And this will be responded first by Israel.
Describe the ways in which you seek out diverse perspectives to inform your decisions on education bills and the budget. Let's just start there.
Okay, so I'm so sorry. Go ahead. Can you repeat that, please?
Well, and actually, let me, let me add part, another part to that one. Like Debbie said, this is almost three questions in one. Describe the ways in which you seek out diverse perspectives to inform your decisions on education bills and the budget. Do you meet with teachers, education leaders, parents or students from various backgrounds?
Absolutely. You know, when I was, as an outreach consultant, I was responsible for bringing together our, our, our parents, our students, teachers, resources within the community, whether it be behavioral health, mental health, victim services, first five. And so you have to get, you know, a cross-section of leaders involved when coming up with a decision. You know, and, you know, everybody has a different perspective. Everybody has a different opinion and everybody has something valuable to, to add and to say that you can take and adopt that when making decisions and setting policies.
The second part of that question is, what have you learned about educational inequality and systematic barriers to student success? And how will it influence your policy decisions moving forward?
You know, well, the experience that I, I've had personally, and I see myself reflected in, you know, multiple kids in Area Six. You know, about 70 or so percent of the families there are Latino. About 30 to 38% of those parents are Spanish-speaking only. And they, they live in, you know, low socioeconomic conditions. So that's, you know, that's something that I identify with. And I believe that we, our kids in Area Six don't have the opportunity to play in a level playing field. So I would, I would approach policy from that perspective. You know, that, that would be the goal, to make sure that our children, you know, have the opportunity to play in a level playing field.
As far as part of that, the, any policy has to be conformed to the education code, of course. And any state and federal laws that, that impact education. And so there's a lot of oversight to that before you get to the point where you can write any or propose any kind of a change or legislation. And it, it is done with the help of staff, the superintendent and his administrative staff. And then we also make advantage of the site committees at each one of the schools, which is composed of the superintendent and usually two to three teachers and two to three community people that are on those site committees. So that we know when we're proposing something, that it is coming from the community itself and not necessarily that's coming from the top down, it's coming from the bottom up.
Okay, we'll move on to the next question. I'm going to turn it back over to Madera Youth Leaders. And Israel, you'll be the first to start. Excuse me, Gordon.
What is the status of student academic achievement in your district?
What was the first part of that again, please?
What is the status of the student academic achievement in your district?
The academic achievement in the district is, is very poor. We are, reading skills right now are under 75%. Only 25% of the district students are reading at the levels they should be. Math is about the same level. A lot of that is, goes back to the first, second and third grade when students are learning to read. Because if they can't read, when they get to do math things that are written out, questions for math, they don't understand it, it's hard for them to do the math scores. What we're trying to do is to bring in teachers that are more proficient at the lower levels for reading and for math, to bring them up to, to grade level by third grade in reading. And then we don't have students in high schools that are only reading at the fifth and sixth grade level.
All right, Israel.
So I believe that, you know, our technology is, you know, there's a lot to be improved on. If you have a training for teachers is also critical. You know, teacher induction is very important. You know, it's important that we, you know, we provide as much support to our teachers, especially the new ones. Because I feel like we kind of, you know, we kind of bring them on board and then, you know, let, leave them on their own to figure it out. And I don't believe that there's a consistent, you know, training that, that, and support that they, that they have with them throughout, you know, the first years of teaching. You know, I think that they should be, there should be a, a system where they're being evaluated, critiqued in a positive way constantly to, to be, to make sure that we have the best possible, the best performing teachers. And in that way directly affect our, our sports. And also parent involvement is, is critical.
All right, Israel, you'll begin with the next question.
How should the district address underperforming schools?
I believe that's pretty much the same answer that I gave earlier. You know, we need to improve our technology, our capacity, our internet, our access to application and also our, our teachers. We need to support our teachers. You can't leave them, you know, high and dry. We need to, you know, provide them with the proper coaching, the proper support, the proper resources. And we need to expand on the, the classroom budget. And our parents, our kids, first teacher, you know, working with first five, you know, that, you know, the first five years, you know, those are critical in the development of early, early learning and child development. Those three things, those three areas.
All right, Gordon.
We have made an effort at the district level to try to bring in more of the Spanish-speaking or bilingual teachers because of the impact of the community of 75 to 80% of the students are Hispanic in our community. And we have implemented the dual language program and have expanded it this year. It started out at Madison and gone on into both Pershing and then a heritage language program at Washington Schools this year. And that will not be really effective until we can get the students back into the classroom. So it, it's really a dual-edged sword though.
Okay, next question. Gordon, you'll begin the next.
How can the school board be more accountable to the public on student achievement, school performance and progress over time?
Please say that again, please.
Yes. How can the school board be more accountable to the public on student achievement, school performance and progress over time?
I think we've tried to do that now as much as possible and by in, involving the parents. This past year, we did a number of surveys of, of both the teachers and parents to see what we can find out from them, what they expect of the, the schools, what they expect of the teachers and the principals in those schools in order to improve both their, their reading and math levels. And it's very important that we have everybody on board, the whole community. The schools are owned by the whole community. It's not just, as I say, from the top down. It has to be involved, the community also. And that's one of the areas that we're really stressing now, of new surveys with the community to get their input.
Israel.
Yes, so I believe that it's important to, to hold the parent meetings, parent conferences after school and, you know, invite the parents to dialogue with us. Yes, so that they can, so that we can find out what they expect from us, from the board, from the schools, but also so that, so that we can communicate to them what we expect from them as parents. So, you know, I believe that a lot of times we settle and, you know, I believe that our children, you know, they, they're able to raise to, to the expectations. And I believe that our parents, you know, if given the opportunity, I believe they can do the same thing. So I think it goes both ways.
We're going to jump back over to Belva for the last three questions and then we'll go into closing statements after these next three questions. And the next question. Go to Israel. First.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district?
You know, I believe having parent meetings, parent gatherings at the school, inviting them to participate and dialogue and then giving, giving them a platform to be able to, to share their concerns and their ideas and their suggestions and, and really, really listening to them, being involved in the community with, you know, with the different resources, with our other leaders in the community, like behavioral health, I've mentioned first five. I've mentioned, you know, our friends at the City Council, the Madera Association of Wheelchairs. And together, you know, we're, we're a community that's not, it's not only about us.
Gordon.
As I mentioned earlier, we have done some surveys this past year with the parents in order to find out their critical problems with the, the learning system that we have in, at the current time. And we also have the teachers with the distance learning are having to call the students at least once a week and their parents to, especially the ones that are struggling and the ones that have not been signing in, for instance, to find out why. Is there a problem? If there is a problem with the technology or the internet that they have, refer it to our technological department to get them to straighten out the Chromebooks for them or to put out the, the proper equipment so that they can get online and, and do the, the work that they need to be doing.
Next question will be answered first by Gordon.
What are the three overall education priorities that, in a perfect world, you would accomplish during your time in office? How will you go about achieving them and why are these the most important?
I think the most important one is a redesign of the system, of the district system. I've been involved with three others of the trustees in a study program with the National Center on Economics and Education Economics. And it is a program to look at the district as compared to successful districts around the world and see what we can do in order to improve our system. One of the things we're doing already is to set up a career ladder for teachers, for instance. I mentioned earlier the idea of the career pathway for, for education when they graduate from high school, to be ready to go into either a workforce or into college, whichever they want to go.
So I think I've, you know, repeated my goals, my priorities, my areas of concern for the district, you know. And I'll say it again, you know, technology is, is a big, is a big area that I believe we need to improve on. I believe that we need to network with other, you know, districts throughout California. I'm not sure why we're not doing that, networking with other successful districts and seeing what they're doing and what's working for them. Also, you know, teacher support, that's, that's huge. I mean, as a business owner, you know, if I bring somebody on board, they expect from, you know, full support from me day in and day out and they expect, you know, for, for me to criticize them positively, of course, in the area of their, you know, their, their need improvements. And lastly, you know, our parents, like I said, they're our biggest resource and I feel like we're, we're coming short and tapping into that resource.
Okay. So, Belva, I think you have one more question.
And this could almost even go into their closing statements, really. What do you think, Debbie?
I do, in fact, but so I do have a question from the public that I didn't get typed up. And I think this will balance out. The question was, in the last year, how many meetings, Mr. Kennedy, have you missed? And to Israel, how many meetings have you attended at the School Board of Trustees?
Israel's first.
Israel, you're first.
Okay, so to be honest with you, I haven't attended any of the meetings during the last year.
Okay. Okay, Gordon, how many meetings, Board of Trustees, have you missed in the last year?
I have not missed any. In fact, as I mentioned earlier, we have, normally will have about 20 meetings a year. There are the months of December, January and June, usually we'll only have one meeting. Since the COVID hit in March, on March 13th, we have had about 22 or 23 meetings since then, this, on this year, plus the other meetings we've had already. So we have, we have probably had about 40 meetings total this year and I have not missed any of them. I feel committed to doing the job right on the, the board. And so it, it, you can't do it unless you participate. And so I, I feel very committed to doing that.
And I do conclude with, with Belva, that the next question can take you right into your opening statements, which you'll get a minute and a half for. And Gordon, you will begin with opening statements. After Belva asks this question, we can roll it right into the closing.
What issues really motivate you to run for Madera Unified School Board of Trustees?
I think one of the main issues is that it, as I mentioned, is the redesign of the, the district education system to do better for the students, to bring up our test scores. Scores are not the whole issue though. When students are graduating from high school with a fifth grade reading level, that is not right. And I think we need to really change the system, bring in the more experienced and specialized teachers at the lower levels of, of learning, at the kindergarten, first, second, third grade, to teach reading especially. And math is the same thing. We are very poor in both of those areas in, in the district. And I think that it's very important that we do something about it to compete in the world. Because when we turn out graduates, we want them to be able to be, go into the workforce or into college at the, a greater level than what they are entering now. So I think that that's one of the main reasons that I would like to stay on the board for another four years and, and implement that type of a, a system within our redesign of our system. There's other areas, of course, that I am very, very involved in, in the board. And I think that community involvement gets more people involved. I think we've had more people on the, the board interviews, at board level. watching our board since we've been on Zoom than we did before we went on Zoom. We've had as many as three hundred people on the Zoom meetings. And that is important to get, I don't know how many of those are the teachers, how many of them are the community people, but that's the people that we need to get into the boardroom to hear what's going on in the board so that they can get their input to it too. But I think that the, those issues are some of the most important ones that I would like to see completed in the next four years.
Right, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, you went for about two minutes, and so I'm going to give Israel two minutes for his closing statement. I have to balance, you know, equality.
Some of the issues that motivate me to run for the board are, you know, I-
Israel, can you speak up a little bit more?
Yes, so can you hear me better now?
Yes.
So some of the issues that motivate me to run for the board are, you know, I identify with the demographic in the area. And I guess our school district is, you know, a low-performing district, but I think that the most disadvantaged children are the area in Area Six. And so, you know, I come from a, you know, a Spanish-speaking, Spanish-only speaking family, a poor family. And I was able to come from that demographic and get my, push my way through college and establish a business and become one of the success stories. And I believe I have a responsibility to our children and to, especially to Area Six, to get on the board. And I believe that we're settling at the board as well, and lacking in a lot of areas. We have our programs, our athletic program, you know, we're competing at, you know, lower levels when we should be competing, you know, higher, better competition. I believe we need to get behind our staff, behind our coaches. We have to be able to retain our, you know, our talent. We also, our teachers, I've said it before, we need to be able to provide the support that they need and keep the classroom spending that we have and even improve that. So those are some of the areas, you know, some of the reasons that I want to run, that I'm running. And also, you know, my children, my children are in the district, you know. And I know firsthand, you know, what it's like, you know, for parents that are struggling right now. Thankfully, I am able to be there for my children, and I have the resources, you know, necessary to help them, you know, succeed. But I want all of our children in District Six to be able to have those same resources. You know, that's one of the reasons that we're going to be. And, you know, I have a connection, and I do, I'm sensitive to that connection between the school, the parents, and the children, so.
Thank you, everybody.